Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the planning board for the town of South Kingstown. Today is Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. It is approximately 7:03 PM. And this is a work session with a meeting established, meeting agenda established as presented. And I'm going to turn it over to Kayla and start with item number one. Oh, before we do that, I did want to comment, and we've talked about it previous to this, or maybe just at the end of the meeting, but past work sessions, we could do them in two hours, and we used to do them in two hours. We'd start at seven, be done by nine. And we're able to maintain that schedule the last two, maybe three years. As you can see, that has migrated to 9:30, to 10:00. Sometimes we get past a little bit, past 10:00. And so I'm trying, so I'm hopeful that if we, yep, I get it. We all have our opinions. We want to be heard, and that's right. But I'm just going to try to push things along. And hopefully that we can get through an agenda, maybe not 9:00 tonight, but within some close proximity to 9:00. So let's give it a shot.
The other announcement for the night, which is that if your microphone's not on, then the recording of the meeting tonight or the streaming do not pick you up. So everyone should now either turn on your microphone and keep it on, or turn it on when you're ready to talk. I'm going to piggyback on what John just said really quickly before we jump into the agenda, which is that you'll also notice that the agendas, we're trying to get to that point, too, right? Honestly, on your agenda tonight, the main point of topic for discussion is parking standards. The others are mostly sort of updates and things we might talk about for five or 10 minutes. So that's sort of us also trying to get to that time-constrained piece, keeping the work sessions focused on one or two matters at hand instead of having three or four, because we have a lot we want to say about things the second there are three or four topics of discussion, we're at three or four hours. So with that being said, our agenda is parking. So parking, the parking standards, you guys all have a copy of the parking standards in your packets. You also have some prompting questions I wrote in the memo to just get something going on this. I'm going to, I want to start by sort of telling you guys my, what I'm sort of forecasting out on how we'll move through the parking piece. So my thought is, is we'll talk tonight. My hope is, is to just get a feeling from you all on where you want to head with it. There are small changes we can make to parking that are probably essential. They're probably all agreed upon around the table. We want to define parking stalls. We want some things about the metrics of how it's working. But while we're opening parking, I wanted to ask some of the questions about if there are changes we want to make to policy relative to parking. So that sort of bullet-pointed list were some of the things that we have kicked around at the staff level of possible considerations. They are by no means, and you all know this, drafts of any ordinances, or there's no, there's nothing attached to them right now. They're mostly concepts. And my hope was, is to talk through those with you all, see where people stand on those items, and see what other ideas people have around the table for what we may or may not want to do. There's pros and cons to honestly everything you can do with parking. There's also usually, there's a perverse incentive and an unintended consequence in all of it, too, it seems. So with that in hand, I mean, I think if that works for you all, do we want to start with the discussion points in the memo, or do we want to go off-script to start? All right. So I tried to write these in sort of order from simplest to most progressive or change-oriented. Right, so our first, the first one in here is defining parking spaces within our zoning ordinance. We do not currently define the standards for a parking space. We say a parking space, including the aisle width, is 350 square feet. That is not the normal way that parking tends to be regulated by towns. There's a simpler, there's a standard dimension for a parking space. Nine by 18 is sort of a universally accepted standard for a parking space. Compact cars, spaces for compact cars lets you bring them in a little narrower. Sometimes, for example, in grocery store parking lots, they want additional space because of the elbow room issue. But something, the thought here is basically, something that I think is a bare minimum for us to address in parking is defining the parking lot, defining the parking space standard, coming up with an idea on whether or not you want to make that one standard thing, nine by 18 always, or whether or not we want to have a margin on either side. If there's a percentage of the parking spaces that somebody is required to build, do you want them to see do compact, or would allow to be compact? And so deviate from them up to whatever percentage, 25, 50, 15. Some percentage of your spaces can be the compact. And is there also on the other side places where you want to say some percentage of these could be wider than nine feet? Or that situation where people want to have a foot or so buffer in between parking spaces? The other thought with parking space is there are also standards that go with that, not just for parking stall dimensions, but for the angle of a parking stall. So as you're driving around, if you pull into an angled parking space, there are standard angles that those parking spaces are at. And depending on those, there's a width aisle you need to back out of that space and keep moving. There's also, the aisle widths can depend a bit on whether it's one-way or two-way traffic. But so there are template figures we can put in the subdivision regulations or in the zoning ordinance that show things like if you have spaces that are at 60-degree angles, your aisle width only needs to be so wide. These are very, very standard things we could bring forward in ordinance for you guys at presumably the May work session to look at again. And we could bring to you guys options for parking lot configuration, which is herringbone patterns, perpendicular spaces, what the associated drive aisle should be, what the parking space dimension is, it's nine by 18. But the question for you all really is, how do you want to handle spaces, times where people want to have that extra elbow room, or want to be providing compact spaces? Do we want to, do you want to allow them in both scenarios, either way?
Sometimes the compact spaces you see, it's usually because there's some infrastructure that's in that parking lot, so they put a compact space there just to utilize the space.
So would that be, find something that says the compact, you can use a compact space in areas where your parking lot has other utilities that need it? Or would you want to go further and just say, a certain amount of your parking spaces could be using compact ones? And you can use them, whether you promote them, or whether you have a site you're experiencing that needs to be utilized.
You know, and to the latter, how would we determine the percentage that is allowed for compact versus standard vehicles?
I think there's, well, one, honestly, research, more than anything else, right? Is us doing some research on this. These are not newly invented things. There are other places that have come up with the, what is the percentage of compact cars that tend to be on the road in an area, so you can have a few reflective of it? I don't, the part of the question is, would you like to see that be permissive, or would you like that, to see that be a little regulatory? Would you like that to be a, you may provide a certain amount of compact spaces, or would you want that be, you must provide a certain amount of compact spaces?
I think it would be good to have some flexibility. Because one of the things, when you were asking your first question, was that, I thought, was that it depends on the situation. If you have a property where you have a lot of truck deliveries, and people needing to make turns with tractor trailers, then you might want to not just think about the actual parking spaces, but the width between the aisles, and allow for more space for deliveries around the back of the building, or, so it kind of depends on the type of use in the site.
Yeah, yeah, right. Whether the parking lot is just a parking lot, or if it's a delivery area, too.
Certainly, if we decide a store or whatever needs 10 spaces, how do you decide, and again, you talk, refer to a formula, but again, how do you, those 10 spaces are critical. How are you going to guarantee that that's, amount will be compact?
How do you rule this?
Yeah.
Right.
So if they have a space that will fit, one size fits all, again, unless there's some kind of, you know, you kind of get a bonus parking spot because something juts out into the parking area, so you put a compact there.
Well, it'd be nice to have the option. I kept thinking about the recent parking lot that was before, and he was really constrained the space. And if you really wanted a certain number of spaces in there, maybe having the option to make some of them smaller would allow you to fit. Like if you, if you have, you know, this much room, and you want, and you need, for the zoning ordinance, so many spaces, if you can make some of them smaller, and just make them as compact, you might be able to fit a number of spaces.
When I, I think that where I've seen it used effectively is when they are designated. So where it says, "compact only," and I'm always questioning myself, I feel like I'm in a huge car, but I'm in a Prius, I think that is compact. You know, so I think that it would have to be designated. And I also then question the other things, and I don't know, you know, Kayla, I know that you have six different items here, but I know that we've been going into lane widths and, you know, travel widths. I think that in some of these areas, we really need to not only consider the parking spaces, but as you're saying, the travel lanes. And I would really encourage us to consider, at least on certain lots, you know, where are the islands? Because there's many lots in town that I have no idea where the travel is and where the parking spaces are. One is Belmont, two is the Wakefield Mall. You just can't tell if you're traveling in a parking space or not. And then you have CVS that put, you know, so many things in there, and it's really dangerous. You can't pull out. And then, you know, be concerned about two-way traffic. So I think that it's not only the parking spaces, I think it is the functionality, which I like what you're saying. Here are some examples, but functionality is something.
Yes, sir.
But the designated ones, if we're going to do compact, they have to be designated. And then the functionality of the whole space.
And you know, to add to what Pam said, when Bill Green's class did the study on the Tower Hall Road corridor, one of the things that is kind of scary in that area is the ingress and egress, if not necessarily delineated. So sometimes it's a free-for-all, so not only do you not know where the spaces are, but getting in and out of there is not terribly safe. It's not well-marked or delineated, landscape.
Is a compact space more the length of it, or the width as well?
It's length, width. It's width. It's height.
So I would have thought it was the length.
Yeah, me too.
Because some of the, where you consider a compact car might not necessarily be narrow, but it should.
Personally, I don't think we should be too prescriptive, because each parking lot is designed specifically for that lot. So everyone's going to be a little different, depending on the geometry of the lot. In some cases, you may have an aisle with parking on one side, other cases, you may have a aisle with parking on both sides. Whether you have angled parking or not, that will depend on your ingress and egress. So if you're going to continue in that direction, then you can have angled parking and continue on. But if you have to come back the way you came, and that angled parking is not appropriate. There is a book, and I'm sure Rich has it, it's called Architectural Graphics, and it has all types of standards and designs for a variety of things, and parking is covered both angled and straight, and single lane parking and double lane. So it all has best practices in there. Typically, like you said, a parking place is nine foot wide, 18 foot deep. And the reason why you stripe a parking is so that you have control, and in turn, you get additional spots. If you didn't have any striping at all, and then what would happen is, people would park further away, and you just want to have that many spots. When you go to eight feet, which is a compact car, it's great if you got a small car. Pam's Prius would be great. My van probably is not going to fit in that. When you get to a point where you have too many compact, what happens is, people don't, no longer pay attention to the striping, and then you lose control, and then you end up losing spots instead of gaining them. I would, one, think that, one, we don't want to be too prescriptive. We may want to look at that, Architectural Graphics, and just look at what some best practices are. I personally think that we should maybe allow some compact parking, but no more than a certain percentage, and have them designated, you know, marked. So a standard nine by 18 in most cases, up to 20, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, up to 25% compact, but they need to be designated, no more than 25%. Something like that.
I was just going to go just read the book. I mean, Rich brings it up often. These people are professionals in parking and this. We should just, don't recreate the wheel.
Lay it out and let them pick what they want to do.
Yes, the next meeting. You know what, Rich and I talked about whether or not you could come tonight. We actually spent about an hour this afternoon going through parking lot diagrams.
In Architectural Graphics, yeah. I use it to design parking lots, that's what I use. So if you go with an angled parking, it's, you know, it's a specific angle that they tell you to go to, and typically, you can go down from nine to eight and a half, even on a full-size, because you're pulling in versus trying to turn and make a 90 with a larger vehicle. So it's all laid out in that book, what the best practices are.
Nice thing about angled parking, you can control traffic control in a direction.
But, exactly. But I mean, I'm just thinking back over the last three, four, or five years, however long I've been on the board, and the only problems I saw really is when somebody tried to do all compact to get the appropriate number, and that, it's just not going to work. At the end of the day, that's not going to work. You know, as far as the design of the parking. So I don't think we should allow all compact, personally.
Okay, good. That's good direction on that one. So to the point about having DPS at the table, yes, we actually were trying to see whether or not Rich could come tonight. Here's my thought on sort of how it may, how I would like to see us all work through zoning ordinance amendments when we do them, is to get into sort of a, and you would have, if you want them more than two, but start to move towards the idea of setting a fundamental trajectory of where we're going, having staff work on the marching orders from that, and then bring to you all a proposal based on sort of that trajectory that was set. That way, we're not spending a bunch of time going down directions that you might not want to go down, and we know sort of where you're headed. We can bring to you then at the next meeting, those detailed pieces of what some of those proposals look like, to go into the weeds on them a little bit more. So at the next meeting, we would talk about parking will probably be May, because April will largely be focused on the housing work cleanup. That, at the May meeting, we will absolutely have DPS here.
That's reasonable. Sounds good.
Yeah. I think that gets us through the first one. Here's the second one. Allowances for off-site parking. So the blur more or less we have in here is that, right now, your commercial downtown zoning district lets you put things within a walkable, within a reasonable distance in certain scenarios, commercial zones in general, you can be on in a budding lot, but you can't be on, you have to go further away. There are things, there's, is it something that happens with it? What ends up happening, when you require all of your off-site parking to be on your property, or your exclusives for your business, which may not line up with other business times, and could be spaces that can be reused, you tend to lose a lot of land in parking area in downtowns. And so your zoning ordinance right now puts this in a spot where you, our commercial downtown district has less parking spaces, and you can have a little bit more immediacy in how far away you are if your parking is on the property itself, or the development is. There are other things to sort of think about when it comes to letting people do different arrangements for off-site parking. One sort of thought is, do you want to allow, in general, in commercial and arguably maybe industrial zones, do you want to allow that parking, do you want to allow the same kindness that happens to the commercial downtown and other zoning districts? Do you want to be able to tell a property that may need to build X number of parking spaces onsite, if they are within a reasonable, walkable distance to their site, and they have rights to them, they can count towards their parking for that instance? There's, that's sort of one scenario to think about, that's something that you allow in the commercial downtown district today. Another thing to think about, I'm trying to see if I'm jumping into this, but I don't know if you guys are on, I guess, you guys can stick with this. These things go together in my head with the next one, which is share parking, different peak hour parking. But really, the question sort of, questions sort of to you all is, do you want us to spend some time going into proposals on what it would be to allow a property to take credit or account for their off-site parking, something that if not on their property, proper in commercial zones in general, if the industrial, or business oriented zone?
Yes, with a caveat. There's a couple of municipal lots between the Sagatuckett River and businesses on Main Street. And there are some businesses using those lots for overnight parking, essentially car storage, or, you know, waiting for these cars to be serviced. And when you're in a zoning district where some of the businesses may not have any off-site parking, just by the nature of Main Street, that uses up a lot of spots that could be used by patrons of the businesses. And I think we need to look carefully at how, whether that's allowed at all, and if so, under what circumstances, and should that be regulated. For instance, I know there was, there was a snowstorm a couple of years ago, and there were 10 cars lined up, and I know because I counted and I took a picture. Several days after the snowstorm, that still had their windshields covered with snow, and there was a plow line of snow. When you have one hour parking on the street, and you have people who may want to be in some of these businesses for more than an hour, you're essentially giving them nowhere to park, if those lots are full. So I think that's something that we need to look at.
Um, please miss. Um, sure. Um, would that be different if there was like a leasing space? Like if, for example, one of the businesses had an agreement in place to use certain parking spaces somewhere else? I guess maybe, let me ask this to everyone. Is it specific to the use of the public parking spaces?
Public spaces.
Okay. So I have an interesting thought for you guys on the public parking space idea, which is, there is also a thing that happens, which is, catalog an inventory from an area where there is on-street or public parking spaces, and accounted them, and accounted them compared to the number of businesses, and provide each of the businesses maybe a certain amount of relief from their parking, with the idea that the street parking or public parking, they should have. Their business should experience some relief, too. I think that to make that work, you need to have well-monitored public parking, because of the fact that you can't have those parking spots compared to residential parking spaces, or they need to turn over.
You're not saying residential, you're saying like a company or a business is leaving their rent.
Is leaving cars there for days.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's just enforcement of that.
Right.
Well, maybe we need to put that on, somehow get that ordinance in teeth, so it can.
And so, okay, so let's go, if we can, let's caveat, let's go to private parking lots. So if you had, if someone had a private parking lot in town that had more spaces than they need, would you be okay with the business owner within a walkable distance, we call that, either a quarter mile or a half a mile on Main Street, it's not as urban as I think people walk from the site? Are we okay with the idea of letting businesses who might need to provide new parking, have a lease agreement, be in place for X number of parking spaces on somebody else's property?
Yes.
Why not?
We do that now.
Yeah, you do.
We do.
Commercial downtown zone now, the question is, is, you, it's not, honestly, your commercial highway zone has a lot of parking area, and that is an area that also might benefit from that same ability to share back and forth, that the commercial downtown does. And from, from my point of view, what that ends up doing is it gives you the ability to use the existing impervious surface, that is parking lot per parking lot, as maximized as possible, when you bring up more than.
A good example of that, Kayla, was when Tavern on Main came to us and opted, they didn't have enough spaces, clearly, so they went further up on Robinson Street to what is now the medical center, rehab center. And they, and we allowed them to use parking. It's not, that was private, but it was, you know, they cut a deal with the, with that center, which had, you know, which had ample parking, and, and the residents are not supposed to have cars anyway, so they had a, they had an abundance of parking spaces. So Tavern on Main took advantage of their parking lot to meet their requirement, and it worked.
The health center does.
They, you're right, they use that.
I think it's listed in their, in their liquor license, something about providing that extra space. But you know, I, I go in there, and at night, when that restaurant is busy, Main Street is for the most part empty, and there's a ton of parking. So I think it's burdensome on that applicant, the liquor license, to have to provide those other spaces when at nighttime, it's not an issue. But at the same time, what's brickly happened? Which I have nothing against brickly, and I, you know, I need to walk after 8:00. You don't ask them to provide any parking, and I mean, you can see by the line out the door in the summer, that there's a lot of cars parked somewhere.
They do have parking, because the building is owned by graphic construction, so the owner isn't making parking. Sometimes they do have.
That's probably where a lot of the employees are.
Right.
Most people don't, I mean, I knew that parking lot was packed, it was not convenient. I usually find a place on Main Street. I haven't had to look forever.
Okay. I want to go back to the public side of that. What do you all, I mean, what do you all really think about that idea, about whether or not it'd be worth doing a parking inventory study, to figure out, right? That, that's one that takes study, right? It takes an inventory study of acknowledging how many on-street parking spaces there are within a wide sort of distance, how often they are full, how often they are not though, and figuring out if there is a proportional amount of relief you want to give those businesses without municipal parking in the area. That may honestly be how you've already landed in the zoning ordinance, where you do with the commercial downtown district, having 50% reduction in parking, the idea that the off-street parking and public parking doesn't. But it's something that we could explore if you all want to see if there's more immediacy to give property owners on their on, their off-street onsite parking.
How would you differentiate that between commercial and residential? If it's residential, if there's a snowstorm and you're not going anywhere, you're going to have to use that parking space, and you're going to have to share.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it would have to be, I think with that in mind, it probably has to be a visitor area, right? It has to be a, because also, it probably needs to go hand-in-hand with parking enforcement on time limits.
In your opinion, I'm just thinking of that idea with, given the parallel parking on Main Street and associated roads, is there any recommendation that DPS might make with regards to putting lines on the parallel parking? I know we talked about that down in the tunic, in terms of designating where the spots are, because sometimes it doesn't, you have more space than people need on the parallel parking. So I guess I would just ask that question, if we are doing a study, you know, how many, how do you designate how many cars, in reality, how many cars are on Main Street, some that are parked close together, some that are parked where they park? So that's just a side. I mean, when you're looking at the parking sizes, maybe you could give us some recommendations on some of the parallel parking.
Yeah, is that part, it sounds like that's largely about striping, yeah.
If that's called striping.
Yeah, yes, yep, so striping is sort of the painting of the lines on.
Okay, on both, okay, yeah.
But yes, yeah.
You know what I think's instructive about that, is drive along the seawall in Maragansett, and look at how much people obey those stripes. They're kind of perpendicular to the seawall, because, you know, it may start out organized in the morning, but by the end of the day, they're all over the place.
And in Watch Hill, they ticket you for it.
They get money.
Really?
Yeah, that's true.
I was just going to say, who, police officers patrol this?
Main Street, Main Street is mostly lined now. When you drive along it, it is mostly, it's mostly lined now. The lines are, are largely fading, but they are, the striping is purposefully, I say that, I parked in front of El Fuego a couple of hours ago, and I did not see a single line there. But it is, so I don't think, I don't know if it's very consistent. I know when, as you start to swing up Main Street to sort of the green line side of things, they, they are clear, because they're very narrow. Right, and everyone experiences that if you park in those. Um, but we can look at what the striping piece is, because you're right, that becomes important for orderliness. Some places do enforce it pretty strictly. Watch Hill absolutely does. Martha's Vineyard is notoriously horrible, where they chalk tires, to know if you've been there more than two hours, and if you're over a line, they're going to say you're occupying too, and you're in trouble. Um, but our police department, I think we will, I will circle to them and talk to them about what that is. We've had pretty extensive conversations about changing the hours of parking restriction on Main Street. There was actually a petition back in, when we still had the Transportation and Traffic Review Committee, about changing the hourly, the mix of hourly versus two hourly on Main Street proper. We had a sort of dialogue, starting with the police department on that, about where the enforcement was or wasn't, but it's a good point, Pete, and I'll circle back to them on it before Mark, Meg, Park.
I don't think right now there's a lot of enforcement on parking anywhere, because you ever seen, no parking on Main Street, why is it?
It's parked.
Yeah, and there's some pieces that are going to put us in a better spot on that in the near future. I think you guys all know that the town is looking to pursue a municipal court, so that we would not be taking people to the actual state court system for parking violations and things of that nature. So we might end up with better tools for enforcement to get them to be a little bit more robust. But there's also the truth to know that there are, anytime only five police officers on patrol duty at any given time, and if somebody is doing parking, that is largely a large part of their job.
Kayla, I'm sorry. Um, I know that we've been talking about number one and number two, but when I was starting to do a little bit of research, I realized that there were different standards for valet parking. So I just put that out, I don't know, you know, that's come up before too. So when we're talking about defining dimensions, and then allowances for offsite parking, shared parking, we might want to just address the question of valet parking, if there's different standards or not.
And that's a great idea. Um, do you think, are you, we think, you thinking Pam, standards along the lines of allowances for valet parking to be further away? Or are you thinking things about standards for where the cars are parked when the valet parking goes on the other side? Is it about the business's operation, or is it about the configuration of where they're putting those valet card?
I think I was thinking about the size of the parking spaces, because they, at least what I was reading, they were saying that when you have a valet, you could have them closer together. Whether that's true or not, but that's, that's what this was saying.
That's fact, that's fact.
So I just wanted to not, to acknowledge that, well, if we have valet, are there different standards or not?
That would define it, that's all that parking lot is used for, but it's going to be used, you know, say during the day, for non-valet uses. And I think you'd best stick to some type of parking ordinance. And then, you know, allow, if they want to have just valet at night, and what they, limit, you know, if they can fit twenty cars during the day, if they want to put forty cars in there at night, that's their responsibility. Use. Just the, under the, I think under the law, you have to have the access from the sidewalk.
Right.
From the road to the sidewalk. But I don't, we don't have any handicap parking.
Be a big problem, it can be a small problem, right? So it's really depending on what your expectations are. So if you live in a small community, you kind of expect to pull up on the side of the store. If you live down in DC, you expect to take a bus to go to your, you know, because you can't park close enough to your office place. But no matter what, we should ensure that all the local businesses, we have ADA spots, that we can accommodate those people that can't walk the distance. So to me, I think we need, as a minimum, we need to be calling out that they need to, you know, follow ADA and provide those number of parkings onsite.
Be appropriate, of course.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that's part of, I am now wondering, I don't know if that's part of the building code. Does ADA accessibility for building code get to the designation?
It, it, it should, it should. But then with that said, I'm not, when I go through downtown, I don't necessarily see an appropriate number of spots, so I just go down Main Street. And I can tell you, ADA is very prescriptive as far as even the markings. So you pull up, you see the wheelchair that, you know, you pull onto, that actually is not official spot. The ADA says that you have to be able to see the sign when you're sitting in the driver's seat in the parking place. So anyways.
Yeah, that, that is beyond my knowledge level. I believe the building code does regulate ADA parking spaces, but that's, that's not my area of competency.
It, it should, it enacts the.
Main Street's also a state road, it's an on-street assisted road, so there's some problems.
I, I guess, so my perspective, I don't necessarily think it's an issue if people have to walk a little ways, but I think as a minimum, we always need to make sure that businesses provide an appropriate number of ADA onsite close to the building.
So.
I'm not sure we do that now.
Yeah, I'll talk with Wayne and see what we do now, and see what we can do to make sure that we're moving towards that goal, if there's something we're not.
But you were just mentioning, if we're talking across the street, bell block or something like that, in one of the places, there's, we're going to have handicap parking in the back, and then it'll be up the hill, and are we saying we're going to put handicap spots on Main Street?
I mean, we really should be providing those spots for those people to be able to get to that space without any type of impediment.
I'm not a hundred percent positive, seeing this a few times. I thought it had something to do with, like, you have to have ADA compliant to get to this space, but if you can't, and you can still deliver the same service outside of your building, I think you need the ADA.
I think you get into basically reasonable accommodations, so if you can't provide it, and you have, you have to figure out how to provide a reasonable accommodation. So it's, it's basically ADA is all about reasonable accommodations. And it gets kind of tricky, because then you don't want to get into a point where you're actually discriminating, where, I mean, you know, I can tell you, on, on the base, if we didn't have an elevator, we'd, you know, propose putting the person that needs the requirements on the first floor, and then you get into the whole, are you discriminating against them, putting them outside of their workplace, and.
That's a good research one. Let me, let me see, let me see what our practice is today. Let me see what the ADA code has for, like, and, and I'm, I honestly, I'm going to sound ignorant right now, but I don't, that's fine with me. Um, I don't, I don't really know when we trigger the ADA compliance of parking spaces. Is it when new ones are developed? Or, like, what is the trigger mechanism we have there today? And if we need a new one, is sort of what I'm thinking. Right, because if it's, if it's, if you're building a parking spot, then that's why we're not seeing them in downtown, because they're, the footprints are as they are, and they're not retrofitting. But if we need a different catchpoint that says, you're credited fifty percent relief on your parking due to the known public parking, then maybe we need the known public parking to be meeting a better need for ADA.
And the ADA will call out when it actually kicks in for it existing, and how much renovate, you know, how much change renovation. Um, and it may not be something that we have to put in zoning, maybe it's just something that we need more awareness on the building side.
Right.
I just don't want to lose that thought that if we go to offsite parking, that we always maintain that.
Yeah.
On site.
Kayla, when you speak about the triggers, I think it would be useful to better understand if there are any other triggers. Like when some of these large parking lots get repaved. And I don't know if it's, you know, it, it's just a huge amount of surface of asphalt. And it seems as though, you know, are there any triggers that would then say, you need to revise this, it's from old standards, which.
Yeah. There, yeah, there, there are, there are. Um, and they are the development plan review triggers and the zoning ordinance. Um, functionally, it's if you are expanding your parking lot, or if you're, actually, honestly, if you are expanding your building in a way that triggers development plan review, and you're out of compliance with your, say, landscaping percentages for your parking lot. That is a hook that currently exists in the zoning ordinance, that you would then have to bring in the appropriate amount of landscaping. If you trigger development plan review permit as well, we're also going to tell you, you need to be accommodating stormwater to some degree, but we only go as far as what DEM would require right now, right? Which is, from a raw site, you have to treat one hundred percent, is roughly my understanding, if it's a redevelopment site, that's reduced to fifty percent. And so if you were paved already, there may, so there's, yes, there are trigger points we have right now on when a parking lot needs to be improved. The Wake, actually, recently, I was in a meeting with the owner of the Wakefield Mall, who, we were speaking about some other, we were talking, public transit, actually, access to the mall property with him. And he actually mentioned to us that he would not possibly remove an island, because the island was a requirement of when he had put the addition on Staples. He had to go back and incorporate the islands in the parking lot for the Wakefield Mall to hit the new landscaping regulations for the town. Um, but so it was an interesting piece to know that that is a catch that has been used. He has, he, the owner of the Wakefield Mall, has been, those are why the islands that are not particularly well performing there, but that's why those islands are there. So we have some of them.
I know that often, a lot of our regulations are in different places, and if we have something called standards for parking lots and loading facilities, maybe even a reference to some of those other ones?
Right, these standards come in play if you trigger these things in section 505.1.
And so, to add on to that, not just the other standards and what the triggers are, but in that, under the general requirements, one of the items, section 703 is paving. And I think in order for us to be more modern in our approach, I think we need to think about language that would allow someone who would like to do pervious parking, that they could do so if they so desired.
Yeah.
Should be a given.
Yeah, and we've run up against that, Reese, where did we run up against that? I'm asking you all. Nine twenty Surf, the surf shop with the pizza place. That was something that, and I don't know if we've vetted through publicly with you all or with us behind the scenes, um, but part of what we vetted through on that was whether or not that was a waiver, or whether or not that was just an authority granted to the planning board to say, yes, you may, because of the way section 703 is written in there. And at the end of the day, it was, we landed on that it was not necessarily a waiver, the planning board can allow this through development plan review. Um, and then where development plan review is not allowed, the zoning board may. And the, actually, the thing you could do to make that more permissive is to get to a place where you're functionally saying, unless you need to come in for development plan review or a special use permit, you can't do it. Right, that's what's sort of, that's what's reading in between the lines on that section right there, is the planning board, you all can, development plan review, authorize people to use permeable pavers and alternative things. The zoning board can also exercise that same discretion in a special use permit. But what if you were not going before for development plan review or a special use permit? What if you were somebody who is just trying to change your parking lot as it was right now, to something different, to a permeable paver? You wouldn't necessarily need to go through any review through the town to do it. Would we then require you to come in and do permitting, or would we just say, that's a good practice, we'd be supportive of you doing it, period?
Exactly, so our language should reflect that, because on one hand, we're very concerned, rightly so, about the TMDL situation, therefore, our policy should be progressive.
Right, if anybody's willing to do permeable pavers, welcome it, right?
I just want to be, I just want to go back. If someone wants to repay the parking lot, that would trigger, okay, I just want to be clear.
No, yeah, no, no, resurfacing, it only triggers if you're expanding in a way that you're going to create more parking spaces with it. Yeah, yeah. No, it, it, exactly, that's honestly, that is, and that's property rights, right? That is, you have as you have, is your right to continue to have and maintain, which includes resurfacing.
I think Wakefield Mall is a good example of too much parking.
Yes.
Plus, his excuse for not doing the proper landscaping over the years, because he's been in numerous times when he's had store development there, is that certain stores require so many parking spaces under his lease. Like Staples said, they, they need a hundred parking spaces, for instance. So that was his way to get around having to landscape that lot.
As well as the fact that he said under the lease agreement that trees might prevent someone from seeing the signs on the building.
Yeah, and those, those are, those are actual, I mean, honestly, those are actual real things, that, that a lot of large corporations, particularly chain corporations, they come in and they dictate for you. Recently, the Wakefield Mall has been talking to us about Ripda, who uses it, and Ripda's plans to make a mobility hub, and how that works or doesn't work, or might have challenges with the use of their private property for this home of the public transit. And one of the things that we've realized in that process was that the owner of that property is not willing to lose any one parking space, not necessarily, honestly, because of a value of his, but because of what his agreements are with Shaw's, and his concern about what it might be to lose one of his anchor tenants. Um, and so, a lot of those companies do actually dictate that you must have X or must provide Y for us. And in that scenario, if that is not in the best land use practice, those are scenarios, and I'm jumping ahead, and I don't know this, we're going to go there right now, but those are scenarios where a town is better served to have a parking maximum, so that there needs to be compromise that doesn't come between a landlord and a business, that there is some other thing that says, it's not that I don't want to give you this parking, it's that if in this town, you can only have this amount of parking. There's a lot more study we need to do and knowledge we need to know about what that really means for those businesses, right? If, if that means business leaves, was, would not come due to it, we might want to handle that differently than if it means a business would be inclined to compromise their standard lease requirements off of it. There's a thing where it could become a bargaining chip if it was something that then could give leniency on the lease standards from that corporate entity. If it's a scenario where it's then driving away a potential tenant for a commercial space, it might be, that is a far more complicated thing to think about, putting on.
So Kayla, just going back to the discussion, I don't think we concluded it, and I, and I'm just trying to, I want to go around the board, around the table here, and see if board members want to provide more direction, but, and that was the discussion we were having about public lots for businesses and/or residential. I don't think we concluded that, and I'm just trying to get a feeler for what are, how do people feel about that? Is, should we limit it to businesses, or do we want some residents to be, you know, some developments that, and I'll use an example of the Healy Development. Or do we want some residents to be, you know, some developments that, and I'll use an example of the Healy Development. So Healy Stores coming in, they're going to obviously put a second deck and they're going to generate parking. They have their lot to the right, which is shared with Etchabon across the street and also the other building just to the, on the same side of the road. So if they were coming and looking for, to meet their parking requirements through a public lot, which is across the street on, on Main Street, how, what's the general reaction? How would you feel about that? And it's an open question across the table.
I, I think that the regulations as written is good for residential, which is, you know, you have 50% reduction if you're in commercial downtown. No less, no less than that. The residential, I think, tends to, parking to be at the same time, right? So in the middle of the night, everybody's got to park in place. I think we should be more flexible on the commercial because different businesses have different peaks at different times. And so it allows you, and typically in the evening, they're, they're, they're empty. So that allows, I think, to be a lot more flexible on the commercial side, but on the residential, I think the regulations as written.
Does the sound?
I don't think so.
Seems like, well, first of all, the parking lot next to Healy's is not municipal lot.
No, I, no, that was, that, right, that's privately owned and it's shared by multiple buildings and.
If you have a resident, you can park overnight in that lot, then yeah, you are, again, you're not having as much overnight overlap between resident parking and resident parking. If you're talking about public parking spaces, so municipal lots, I think you'd have to look at whether parking was allowed overnight in those lots in the mall. Unless it was a parking ban situation, people were forced to park there, so they're not parking in the street. But if you're going to be encouraging mixed-use developments so that we have more housing to have, we'd rather accommodate residents parking in these lots. I'm more concerned about municipal lots being used as car storage for businesses and residents. I think developing this parking study that you're using for us in the future, on the big picture. And as we said, we are going to encourage, we are, more housing opportunities. We need to think about where those folks would park and have a gathering or party. That as well.
Okay, so we have some homework to do.
I've, I've done one of these parking studies for the town of Plymouth, New Hampshire before, and it was pretty productive for them in downtown to just get an idea of how often is vacant, how many spots are actually within what kind of radius, how often are they full and how often are they not? Are they noticeably less full in the evenings? Are they noticeably more full on the weekends? Are there, are there times, are there known conflict times? And then there are, are there observed times where we might anticipate a conflict that just never seems to actually come to fruition? Because those are important things to know about the way people are already living and working and moving around.
We might need a special section just for Matunik.
Kayla, do you have any thoughts or recommendations regarding electric vehicle charging stations? I know that there's some in the municipal lot, just thinking about some of the other lots. Is that something that's common to encourage in lots over X number of spots, et cetera?
Yeah, I, I am familiar with people doing it in large scenarios, where there are large, large parking lots where some large employers requiring a certain number to be electric vehicle spots. URI is actually doing a lot right now to, they're, they're rolling out a whole master plan to get the infrastructure so that they have electric parking in all of their parking lots to some degree or another. I think function, I think honestly, at the end of the day, it's something that you could encourage people to do. You end up only likely, I don't know if it's something you ever require. And if you do require it, it's something I think you only end up requiring when there is a large enough traffic generator or employer. It's something more along the scale of things like the building of a new South County Commons or the hospital perhaps maybe, you know, like places where there are large, large numbers of different vehicles coming from a wide swath of population. Yeah, then they, right, right now, the town is working through, we got the charge-up grant to put the ones in the municipal lot. We've ran that free as a program for a period of time. We're now realizing actually what the municipal cost to us has been of that. It's, and it is not, it's not negligible. It's, it's thousands of dollars that the town has been paying for people to be charging their cars. And we're now moving to a pay-for-play, a pay-for-charge scenario on those chargers instead of having them be free access. But there's a, I mean, there's a piece to honestly continuing to pursue those things separately, right? There's, there's the regulatory conversation we're having tonight. Then there's the idea of there actually might be times that we want to keep pursuing those grants at municipal lots.
Just one last little nitpick. It seems like we need to come up with a number with what, of what we consider walkable. Like a reasonable walking distance. That number's going to change based on who you are and how much you're carrying.
Yep, there's, half a mile as walked is a, is like a, is like a standard practice to use. I was, I actually, earlier when I was talking, I said, half a mile, maybe quarter mile in some scenarios, depending on sort of what's around. But yeah, yep, yeah, you, you define in the ordinance what is generally considered to be a walkable distance from it.
I'm laughing because I'm thinking of somebody walking half a mile to go to their favorite restaurant on Main Street or somewhere and not happening.
Like there's a scale piece, exactly, like there's a scale piece to what Joe was saying, right? Like you walking half a mile in a city to get to what you need, no big deal. Walking a quarter mile in Wakefield to get something, geez, I might be driving somewhere else, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is, yeah.
And so like largely for us, it potentially becomes more, it's, it's a, it's a, in smaller areas, it is a smaller radius, people are comfortable walking. So the half mile sort of practice, I think we, we tighten down to maybe a quarter of a mile.
And this is Rhode Island.
This is Rhode Island where one needs an overnight bag to go a couple towns away. Yep. All right.
I think we covered item three, shared parking, phased parking development. I, I think that's realistic. You know, if a development is phased development and they can showcase or that they can accommodate a percentage, you know, the phase one, whatever that may be, and develop the parking lot accordingly. I personally didn't have a problem with that.
I thought it was a really interesting concept. I think we would need a mechanism whereby we evaluate what would be appropriate and then have some kind of, something in place about additional parking.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's like, I was, I was thinking it through, it was, my mind was largely about sort of having the land area there, knowing that you have the ability to accommodate the stormwater of what you might need to pave. And then being able to say, okay, I, and I have those drawings present, the town has seen them, we know they're acceptable, we know they're approvable, but we just don't want to build it. And in that scenario where someone says, I just don't want to build it because at the end of the day, I know my business and my business only needs a third of what the regulations require. When we're trying to reduce impervious surface, when we're trying to do all of that, this is a very reasonable way for us to, to let the market demand guide the parking that's required, but know that we're giving the space to correct it if it's falling short. Which probably to the idea of enforcement becomes a little bit about if you've got, if you're starting to have people parking off of that area, right? Because largely it's you're going to have a flat area that's sort of loomed and seeded and could turn into parking in the future. And when people stop abiding by the parking spaces and they start parking on those turfed, grassed area, like there are, there are ways you can start to visibly see they're outgrowing this. Five is an interesting one. Five is, five is, five is the big, is the bold concept for the night. The bold concept for the night, which is to either, one, get rid of parking minimums. I told Rich I was going to tell you all tonight, get rid of parking minimums. And Rich was like, are you really going to do that? Why, why would you do that? Well, I don't know that we've really got that far, but.
It's an interesting point. I mean, a lot of communities, there's some articles written about the less parking you build, the less cars you'll have in your city.
There's a piece two that I'm going to tell you all. I can be very, very long-term as a, as a thinker. And there's a piece two, we never develop parking infrastructure collectively. If we ask everyone to solve it individually on a case-by-case basis. There's a time where you need to allow a situation to become uncomfortable, so a new solution is driven out of it. There's a time where you potentially, and I'm not saying it's in South Kingsland, I'm not saying it's today, but there's a time where you may actually see you want parking to become a little uncomfortable so that the market will support a private parking lot to be developed somewhere. Or a parking structure to be developed somewhere for it. And when you require all the minimums to be handled on case-by-case basis is you constantly are weakening the demand for that centralized, larger investment in a parking solution. And so that is part of what makes me think about the idea of what happens if you got away from the minimums? What happens if you got away from the minimums and things got uncomfortable for a while? What happened if you got away from the minimums and there was an 18-month period of time where people were just, you cannot find anywhere to park, this is crazy? Does the market then solve the issue of parking? Does the town then take on a different idea in development of a new municipal lot to accommodate that? Or, and this is the piece where it is an unpredictable thing to do, or do you find that in that 18-month period, the damage to the businesses, at the small businesses that are happening and the vibrancy of people coming to them just burns people out on having your draw?
Or you're burning out the residents who are out of business. You know, I'm thinking of, you know, there, there isn't a municipal lot. There's a parking problem down there. People are going to the business and the residents are the ones who seem to be suffering most of it. And the solution hasn't shaken itself out, this has been going on for a long period.
Yeah, and the issue.
Think about Robinson Street, there's some of those streets adjacent to that, you have one-way streets with residences on them. have one-way streets with residences on them, what potential negative impact would there be to those people?
At least, can you, I didn't hear you state the location. I didn't hear it all.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was gonna tell you about.
You have the ability for, yeah, residents...
Do you have all parking grounds?
We do.
You would say the ordinance is yes, if somebody wanted a building, because all of a sudden you saw, it's not likely to happen, so...
Right.
That's not the way.
Right.
But I, I was... As far as eliminating, if somebody comes before us and can prove that they think there's an obstruction of parking available, whether they have to hire a traffic engineer to join in that, you know, we should have a mechanism that would allow us to, on a maybe a case-by-case basis, to allow, to do stuff.
Yeah. If we did go to that step of eliminating fully, I think that it could be worthwhile to think about a quid pro quo whereby, if they had this reduction, they would have to then make up for it with some green infrastructure or landscaping or something of that nature to help the TMDL and all of the other...
Potentially, there's an argument to say that if they didn't put in the parking, they've actually done more than their neighbor who put it in for the TMDL already.
I mean, the world's changing. People aren't driving as much, people are carpooling. I think we need to, yeah. What I've seen with the parking restrictions, it's hurt more businesses than helped, because they can either not find enough parking spaces to get that, or they're renting spaces from someone down the road where, like you mentioned, the tavern on Main, Main Street's dead at that section. They're paying extra to move up. I mean, I think if someone's coming in to start a business and their customers can't get to them, that's the business problem.
Right.
It's a bad idea. It doesn't make sense. So, yeah, I mean, I think it makes some extent. I'm not a big fan of asking them to run all these traffic reports and studies and stuff like that, because it's a lot of money for these, you know, it's not like we're talking about CVS, right? Right. Yeah, I just think we need to look at reducing it.
There's a, there's, and there's nuance that we can play with in this in the next couple of months to bring this back to you guys, but there's, there's a thought, there's a thought that we've been kicking around downstairs a little bit, which is Jay's familiar with, I think, and it probably is Westerly, who's, who's done this and says, if you give a parking study. And my comment to him was, well, that's, that could, that could be a tall and expensive order for someone, if they're a small business, right? If it's a corporate business, that's a nothing. If it's, if it's a mom and pop and somebody trying to start something little, paying a traffic surveyor to do a traffic study to prove that you don't need to do the parking spaces, it doesn't necessarily sound like an incentive for us to, it doesn't sound like the town promoting you to reduce the parking. It sounds more like a, if you really fight for it, maybe. And, and so I sort of, I bristled at that, the idea on the parking study a little bit because of that. And then, I started thinking about it a little differently, which is, maybe the, there's more to play with in the, what triggers you to need to develop parking? If you're moving into a new building, if you're moving into a building, the building is there, you're doing a change of use, you're coming into it, you're at that point making a decision for your business and your business alone about the parking needs. If you're building a new structure, you're building a new commercial or business-oriented structure, you're then making a decision for yourself, but you're also making a speculative decision for the life of that structure, which may very well outlive your business. Does that make sense to you all? If you took the time to, to build the building, the buildings tend to last longer than the business that's within it. The business, in the most successful of scenarios, outgrows it, moves into something else, and another business moves in. But there's also a scenario where, if you were building a new commercial or industrial property in town, we might not tell you, you can walk away from all parking. Because if that was a miscalculation of you on your business, the ripple effects of that will carry after your business. But if you're moving into an existing building and you're saying, look, you're telling me I need 75 parking spaces, I'm telling you I need 12, and I'll be fine with the 12 I've got, that is something that we might be willing to say, okay. Building into an existing structure, at your will, at your, at your peril, at your risk. Construction of a new building, we wanna give you some guidelines about the type of use going in it, and what the understanding of what the type, that type of use might need for parking, period, as a blanket type of use in a new structure.
How about when you have an existing building that then decides to expand? And then has issues with the additional parking requirements?
I might put that in the same category as moving into a new building, but I, I'm not sure. I honestly, I'm sort of playing with that idea a little bit, right, of where, of where that line falls.
I mean, I think it's such a burden to the business owner to, like, they're exceed, they're growing their business, I mean, they're growing and struggling to grow it, they're getting there, and now there's just more requirements that are gonna put on them.
Do you think that they're making that decision, they're going to spot up again with the different looking area that they're in the park?
No. No, I mean, I think a lot of small business owners don't know what they're doing. And they're getting into this, and they're working through it, I mean, the reality of it is, they're working through it, trying to figure it out, they, they, some, I did not think my company would grow as big as it did when I started this thing. So I think sometimes it just becomes something amongst itself. I mean, I talk to most business owners, they don't even have a business plan, you know? So like, they're just trying to get day-to-day and make it through what they can, the struggles, and that's why here at the Chamber, it's just, they're trying to get it through. I don't necessarily, I think they have some general guidelines of what that would look like, but I think you get in, you're like, oh, we can do this, and then you realize you need more, and you need to open it up a little bit, and expand a little bit, and you talk about moments, you know, what that triggers on some landscaping, landscaping, if you need to do a small addition, it starts to ask a lot of burden on the business owner.
So, you know, to Pete's point, and I agree, and dealing with a lot of commercial industrial developers, for the small business owner, I agree, organic growth is unpredictable. And you don't know when it's gonna happen. Is it a year from now? Is it three years from now? Or is it three weeks from now? So it's very difficult to predict, and, and you're right, they're, they're so busy doing everything within the business. Whereas businesses, larger businesses that have, some are publicly traded, some are not, you could even have a privately owned company, but when they come in looking for sites, they're much more methodical. They have the professional consultants across the table, no different than when we deal with the subdivision here. And, and they're looking at, and it's always with the mind for growth. So they take on a parcel that can accommodate the existing footprint for the building, and give them a little bit of square footage as an addition, which also may mean a little bit of parking, and I'll use Quonset as a classic example. And, and obviously, the footprint will dictate how many square feet of building you can put on there. If not merely by the, you know, the building to lot coverage ratio, there could be other parameters that will dictate it's gonna grow to X from 60,000 to 80,000, and that's it. But those businesses pretty much are, I, I'll say medium, and larger businesses, again, plan more, they, you know, they plan. And they have the ability, they can see growth, or they understand what their, their plans are telling them growth could generate, and as a result, they start to plan for it in the building, parking, acquiring additional acres so that they have future, they have the ability to grow. But the unfortunate part is, that's a very small percentage of Rhode Island-based businesses, because the giant percentage are small businesses that, again, you know, they, they don't have the ability to plan the way a medium-to-large business has. They don't have the capital, it's, they're running the business, their chief cook, bottle washer, they do it all. So, yeah, it's, and, and they are the majority of the businesses. Majority of the businesses have less than 20 employees in our state. That's a challenge.
I would also encourage that through the development, hopefully, of the parking lot study, that we take into consideration the, the needs and the consequences of economic, social, and environmental impact.
So, I'd bring this one now from the extreme to where we may land on something, which is, you could also think about relaxing your parking minimums, instead of doing away with them altogether. You could just relax them, and you could relax them significantly. And still have another column that says guideline, which is a different, yeah. Part of me honestly, for a second, thought, I know how to fix this, I'm gonna cross out the word parking minimum, and I'm gonna write parking guideline, and we're gonna be done with the whole thing. Here is the recommendation, 350 square feet of gross usable floor area for retail, you'll need one parking space. That is the guideline, get rid of the minimums. I understand that there's value to having some minimums perhaps, and rightfully so, because we are not in a place where that market-driven solution comes quickly. Similarly to that, we're in a small, it is a small town. And being a small town, it is not like these things generate enough momentum to build a $15 million parking garage overnight, right? That would be a decades, maybe, long, sort of uncomfortable area we work in. So maybe there is value in keeping some level of parking minimum. But that's an idea that I think maybe is a little bit more where we would land on this, is heavily relaxing your parking minimums, turning that list into a table that says, parking minimums largely relax, parking guideline is a different number. And it's clear that that is not a regulatory number, but that number is just a, basic standard today is blank, you can go down to as low as this. And giving people sort of a reference point and a standard in their, in their, that's right. Guideline is this, minimum is that, and letting people figure out where they want it.
Are you talking commercial districts only? CD, CN, CH, or just CD?
No, I'm talking all, all commercial and industrial or mixed use.
I, it's an interesting concept, and it'd be, I can see it on the business side, but if we're gonna get into mixed-use development, I would not make it a, I would not provide that to the residential side. I think they, they need more stricter guidelines, minimums, requirements, their requirements need to be more fixed and prescribed, primarily because that vehicle's gonna be there. Maybe not 24 hours a day, but it's gonna be there a majority of the time. On the business side, that's the incentive for the business to, and again, that, you know, that client visiting a business, retail in particular, could be 45 minutes an hour, could be more, could be less, it's a rotating, so I, I could see that, that'd be interesting for businesses, in my view. I'd like, I could see that on the business side only.
No, that's, that's funny, because when I was going through the, the table that we have now, the first line, apartments, multi-household dwellings, two are required for each apartment. That was one that jumped out at me, is, you know, we could, seemed to me, safely go down to one and a half, because you're gonna have people living alone, you know, you're gonna have couples, you're gonna have families, but you're gonna have plenty of people living alone too.
Commercial downtown, is that right?
Yes, reduction, correct.
Yep.
So if we're talking about other commercials, I was gonna mention, yeah, that's true.
I was thinking of careless chaos of parking apartments.
You gonna call it?
Well, I was just thinking, like, the reality of that is, the reality of that, or, or reducing, it wouldn't be an issue for years to come, because it's not like people are gonna, the audience is not full of people going, I'm gonna park wherever I want tomorrow, I don't have to park, it doesn't matter. It only comes into play when we start creating new stuff. The only time I see people parking on side streets is when down, like, there's not a draw. Oktoberfest is the only draw where I see people parking all over the place. It's not like, I think we do need to reduce it. I don't...
Time you get worried about it is...
It's gone.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it's just that there's not a draw. Fourth of July, the fireworks, what's the draw? It's not like there's mass people exit, you know, people coming into town ready for these parking all over the place. I mean, I think if we reduce it...
Not like we have a lot of vacant lots, but...
Yeah. Right. I understand parking on the street and that, in front of people's houses, but what are they coming for?
I, I like the idea of, of guidelines. I think it's definitely a good starting point for conversation, and certainly, I think we need to do more to reduce the areas where we have seas of asphalt. You know, you create the heat island effect, you, you know, you need trees.
And...
I also think it's difficult to have a conversation about parking without talking about both landscaping and lighting, whether that's the best.
It's there.
I think we need a mechanism to be flexible.
A clear...
Yes.
And, and residential, she's having a, a, a job, and it's all, you, you, so it's all right, we think, we're, we're, the main business is operating, changing, the photograph is changing. So what happens is, operations, I pulled it to a, over stop shop, uh, gave it a listen, and I noticed UPS has, now they have a couple of spots, it's a UPS owner, and then there's the, there's the...
Is that why you park?
I parked there, 'cause I really liked that. No, but right next to them is the, is the, that food place, that has two or three spots that's in the building. So if we allow minimum, nothing, right? So they go on there, and at some point they determine that they need, that it's, they're certain, well, because they have a lot of people picking up there, they need some spots. So now they put up signs that say, this is all home, but they didn't provide them in the beginning. So I think we, I think we need some, you know, rather, we certainly need any requirements, but then some, because the ground is just gonna change, and some of them, they're gonna be designated as possible, they never provide it, they don't assign your, kind of, so... I think we should provide some flexibility, and then flexibility should be, if it's not an option, you know, that it is, that it is possible, you know?
I think maybe if we set a really low floor, and then kept information in there for people on the idea that, because, one thing with really reducing a floor like that, people are very used to the idea of parking maximums, and if you cracked up in a zoning ordinance, and you were on the perm, on like the applicant side of it, and you went through and you're like, great, they only need one parking space for every 10,000 square feet of area, this is gonna be so great, easy, done, all set. Having a guideline in there that also sort of says, the industry norm for this is blank, we allow you to go down to this, is also just a good reference point, because people oftentimes are getting their information from the zoning ordinance too, right? They're not researching what's the standard norm for parking, and then looking at your zoning ordinance. And if they looked only at the zoning ordinance, you want them to know that if those are very low ceilings, they might not, they might wanna think about what meets their business even maybe a little more, but it gets the ability where, it honestly puts you, puts us in a, for a town into a different seat in the regulation. It puts us not in a spot where we're saying, you must always have this much parking for your business. It puts us more in a spot where we say, this is the very least, we know you're gonna need to keep things generally working, and you figure out what works.
Isn't that so much nicer, the way that sounds, than you have to?
And they're begging us to, gotta put in a few more.
And it, it can be based, to a certain extent, on research and study, with the ability to revisit it in the future.
Right, and then if it's not, exactly, and then we live and we learn, right? And we see whether or not this thing is landing in a situation where people are constantly building the minimum and we're all fine. Constantly building the minimum and we're not fine, and we need to tweak it.
Yeah, I mean, I felt like a coffee shop that was in front of us at Feet First that's going in there.
We're awakening.
Yeah, they're like jamming spots in the back, and we're talking about how unsafe it is to walk across the, and it's like, they, they have to jam these spots in, the bike path, there's gonna be a bike path right there, there's gonna be a bike lane where they can ride their bikes. They don't need all those spots, it's silly. Doesn't make sense. And then places, like someone mentioned CBS, that place is a death trap. To get in and out of there is insane. Yeah, I stopped going there because of it.
Always back in.
Yeah, it's just a nightmare.
Well, Halls does very well through their parking lot, they get a lot of business.
Yeah, right.
And then when you add poverty to the equation, right?
The other thing in CVS too, right, the...
Right, looks good flat, right.
Backing out, like the hill is...
Yeah. They don't really articulate it, you know?
Okay, so we'll talk, we'll talk, I, I think that's, that is probably what you'll see sort of on that side coming, coming back at you, is maybe not a full do away with, but a, what if you brought these things down to a, to a real minimum, and you started trying to put more on the commitment side of, we want less impervious surface, we want less land lost to parking? Let's, let's let people start to figure out where that is for them, see how that goes for a while, and see...
That's fair.
And lighting, yeah, to be part of the conversation. I mean, we've talked for how many years now about having lighting ordinance?
Too many. Who was Joe's la, I can't remember Joe's last name? The engineer who was on, yeah, right.
There are a few places, the shooting preserve, has anyone driven by that?
Yes.
Which place?
I didn't hear.
Oh.
That was a water cliff.
Yeah, yeah, I think the lighting, the lighting piece, yep. What's funny is, when you read the regulations you all have in place today, it empowers you all to require the lights to be on 24 hours a day, if you believe in it. And that is all it empowers you all to say with regard to lighting of a parking lot. So the idea of having those dark sky compliant downcast fixtures, the idea of having not more lighting than you need, the idea of having the lighting on timer so it's off during the day, are all great things that often are discussed, but we don't actually have something that you all can harken back to to say, no, that is really the way we, we do this year.
The fellow who we were referencing was an electrical engineer who was on the board at one time. He could read all the lighting specs, he was the only one of us who could do so.
Yeah, he was good. Holquist, Joe Holquist.
The town should think about that. I think the town should think about that, they're like the worst culprits when you drive out of Mountfield or the, you know, the tennis courts.
I drove past Mountfield the other night, I thought the same thing.
There's nobody there, yeah, right.
Nobody there, and they are floodlights, and they are large, and they are bright, and I think you can see them from states.
You have to be careful, there's imperatives.
When you think about the, uh...
One thing, and, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us.
When you think about those lighting requirements, though, what about, I see we have another compassion center coming, aren't they required to have lights all around the building, and they have to stay on?
Yes, yes.
Or is that just a girl house? Something about security.
No, it is, you're, you're right, you're right. It's about it being, the area has to be sufficiently lit, including all parking areas, walking and surrounding the building, so there, yeah, there are, there are DBR regulations, so that's...
Those would fall outside our special situation.
Right, we can still say that they should be downcast, but that's something that I've, and we've seen any lighting go through anywhere, I've heard you all require that of people, I'd love to just give you all that official thing that says, hey, everyone, when you read the ordinance and you first put together your site plan, you should have seen that we needed it, and we can tell you it needs to happen very clearly without debate.
I think if we were very forward-looking, for example, with Hatchery, when we required them to have blackout curtains, so they couldn't have that lights going as they're operating.
But for even the compassion center, Steve, you could, honestly, it's, I doesn't, I don't know that I've seen it happen here when I've been driving around, but you all know town much better than I do. I don't know that we have people who leave the parking lot lights on all day, but there are places where that's an actual problem, where, where they just, the lights don't come off during the day, and so in the daytime, those parking lots are, lights are still running.
That's a problem.
And so that's...
It wants to pay for power that you don't need.
Right, exactly, and so like, that's where honestly saying from, like, parking lot lighting should only be on during the hours of the day, it is not lit naturally, right? Like, and it's not something that necessarily, I think, is a big problem, clearly not, and we don't really know of times that it's an issue, but having something in there that just says, lighting should be on, it should be on timers, or there should be a way that things are turned off or on.
Energy conservation should be what a sustainable community needs.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I think sometimes the OSHA or the safety rules will like step over that. Like, I know in a lot of commercial construction, you have to have lights on all the time in large commercial applications, all day, all night, doesn't matter, it's a safety compliance issue, because it could be a cloudy day.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna have to look at that a little bit, but so that's the sort of last one of our park, my parking prompts for us tonight.
All right, that was good, we did 90 minutes on that, and I think we're doing good with the other last remaining item, so I'm gonna give it to you again.
And I'm gonna say, I think the only thing, I heard that people wanted to maybe, and I'm gonna throw Amy, talk a little bit about Amy's memo, so I'm gonna burn through these, and honestly, if we got out of here early, I don't think anyone would have an argument with me. And if not, then we'll, we'll do that, so I'm gonna go through these kinda quickly so that we have some time to add up for discussion if you want.
Sure.
This is actually an idea that came from Amy, it's kicked around, it's, I've been kicking it around with Rob, I've talked to John about it a little bit. Right now, zoning ordinances, as they come, we process them, they go to the town council. We might actually think about getting onto a system on those, they're inevitably be the ones that are urgent matters that have to come out of cycle, but getting into a cycle where the council generally knows, on a quarterly, semi-annually, annual basis, we will be coming with not individual zoning ordinance amendments, but packages of zoning ordinance amendments. There's an efficiency piece for this that helps us with budgeting too, which is that instead of running notices for individual separate zoning ordinance amendments in the newspaper, we can start to consolidate them. I know that sounds little, but when... I know that sounds little, but when we're trying to keep our departments very, very level funded, the newspaper advertising rates in the last two years have tripled. And so that means that our advertising budget has decreased by 66% in being level funded because the newspaper costs for advertising have tripled. And so in that, if we, that's sort of backhanded benefit of doing this grouping is that it actually is going to let us use that advertising money more efficiently too. Instead of constantly, we're constantly borrowing and moving budget amendments around, which is just administrative nonsense.
Thank you for thinking of that. As a taxpayer, thank you for thinking of that.
We, we talked about this before, about doing it like twice a year, submitting.
I could, yeah.
Well, we did it with comprehensive plan chapters.
Right, right, the comprehensive plan, exactly. The ordinance on comprehensive plans, the planning board will only hear comprehensive plan amendments and make decisions twice a year. So the council then also will only do those twice a year. It's a similar idea and then generally just getting to a place where the council knows this time and this time is when we'll be bringing those things that we just aggregate up over the work sessions to then roll out. Something is a time urgent issue, it's something that needs to be passed and put in place because of something that's coming our way or needs to be addressed. Clearly, we're not going to make this such a hard and fast rule that we can't deviate from necessary. But just as a matter of procedure for us, I think it'd be helpful.
And you know, from a procedural standpoint too, granted, we are advisory to the council on zoning matters, but it allows us to do research on a particular topic, have a conversation with the public and then provide an advisory opinion. So generally, that's sort of the way the process has been. Not that we want to spend a lot of time discussing chickens, which fortunately we won't need to, but.
It might prompt us to get something done, we know we have a six month of submittal coming up. And okay, let's get this done, let's have our staff talk about it, have the staff care something, look at it and then present it.
That's one of the good tricks when you have deadlines. Yeah, and when we're, when we're running them, there are a lot of little things in the zoning ordinance that, and Amy will probably violently nod her head on this, that just need to be cleaned up. Things that are just, there is functionally no change in any policy that is happening from it, but a section is miscross-referenced in a very convoluted way or just things that have fallen through the cracks. Really honest cleanup matters. This gets us in a spot where we can start folding in those quick cleanup things at the same time too, without running those all as some independent event to change the word, to redefine home occupation, to not have terms in them that are moderately offensive to people, for example. Very reasonable thing to do. But so, cool. That's that one. Any other thoughts around the table on that?
Yeah, let's just make sure the town council's on board because on one hand, the idea of grouping them makes sense so they don't have to be considering a zoning ordinance amendment, you know, every month, every two months. And I think we did five in 2019, my quick count. But also, we don't necessarily want to overwhelm them with super comp, you know, if there's multiple aspects. But I think, my guess is they would prefer to consider them in batches.
Item number three, Kayla.
Item number three. Okay, open house, date was moved to St. Patrick's Day. Nobody loves it, nobody loves it. The only dates available for the rec center for the entire much, month of March, which meant basically we were, we were put in a situation where it was March 17th, build another space to do an open house workshop, or mousse a month on the project. And we said, well then we'll have this as an open house and people can come and they go. And if you're more concerned with your corn, beef and cabbage at 5 o'clock, you can do that and come to the open house after. And if you're more concerned with your green beverage for the evening, you can come before and then make your way to wherever you'd like to go. So.
Get the, get the food trucks.
I was going to ask the same question.
So, is that a real question or a joke question? A joke question?
It's a joke question.
But so I want to give you guys just in kind of an idea of what the format of the event is going to be like, what's going on, how it's, how it's happening. It is, you may have noticed, it's posted as an AHC and a planning board meeting. We are the abundance of caution world on open meetings at this point. That is for the event that four of you or four of the AHC show up, circle up, start talking about a topic and you have an open meetings issue. It is.
That's the reason why.
So that is why it's posted, it's posted largely because it is a meeting that's being held to inform work that you and the AHC are working on together. And so out of an abundance of caution, it's posted as a meeting. The idea on it is that it's, it's an open house format. So from four to eight, it'll be familiar to you all, to something that I was not part of, but the very first comp plan event was a similar scenario. So there, right now, after our February work session where we talked about the, those three housing topics, the Affordable Housing Collaborative, two nights later had a meeting, talked about the same topics. I spent some time with Jeff Davis going back and forth on what were the sort of pieces from that that made sense to ask the public at large to get better input on direction and sort of, are you headed in the right direction? Do people want something to go one way or another? And so we've put together boards, so basically for each of the topics, there's a board that says, this is what currently exists today or where we're going. This is some base information. There's a second board that says, this is what we want your feedback on. And there are largely questions like, should you need additional lot area on these smaller lots? And there's a map that shows where they are for accessory dwellers? Yes, no, whatnot. There's, and so there's a series of ways for people to give input on questions that are directly related to the things we all sort of talked about maybe doing to get a feel on whether people support them, struggling with them, where they're at. Those are, those will be around the room. We'll have two staff planners and at least one or two planners from Morsley Witten there. You all are so very, very much invited to come for as long as you'd like or as little as you'd like. But know that you are not responsible during that event to be answering questions. You are welcome to have obviously discussions with everyone you would like to in that when people are circulating. But if people have questions about specific things, the staff in the room are sort of there, direct as resources on pieces and the boards provide a lot of information too. The thought is, is we're not sort of asking you guys to be put on the spot for this, we're just asking for the community to come, get some information about what's going and give us some feedback on where that's headed. So that's what's going on. I brought some extra flyers if people want to post one up somewhere around or whatnot, but I think they went out your packets too. And plus, if you love this or want to talk about that at all.
No, it sounds pretty straightforward and again, you, you alluded to how we did this very session with, when we started the comprehensive plan process, so. And the only difference is that board members were asked to participate and stay near a, an individual board, try to address questions that people might have to the best of their ability, try to provide an answer. And if not, we relegate them to the staff. And that was, I, I thought it worked out very well.
And the same thing goes for this one too. I mean, like, don't take this as a, you can't stand beside a topic that you're particularly really interested in and hear what people are saying, talk with them about it, answer questions and all of that. Should be all of those things, it should be a very organic move around, comfortable experience for everybody where we'll get some good feedback afterward. My last comment on that is, we actually are planning to run a survey after the fact because we hear very often, very often we hear about the people who didn't get an opportunity to participate after they heard an event happened. And so we actually are going to take, Jeff is working right now on taking those same question points from the event to do a survey after the fact so that if people couldn't be in the room, heard that it was a great thing, still want to provide feedback, we'll have an online format for people to maybe be able to do an online survey.
Kayla, just wondering, I like those ideas. Just wondering if we're going to be able to get an article in the newspaper beforehand? Just, you know, because it often helps, I know, well, so Thursday is the Independent, but at least near against the Times.
Yeah, we, we. We might be able to get something in the Times for their Friday paper.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
We'll see.
Might be a good time to mention if you do get that newspaper, put it in there, they will bring it online. Will they have a poster or something?
Yeah.
People can say.
Yeah, hopefully at the end, like at an exit table, there'll be a little thing you could take with you that says, if you want to fill out the survey.
And are you able to send, I don't know if you were able to get the emails from the people that filled out the survey the last time? Are we able to send either an announcement and or a survey to them?
So we, most of the people, we do not have email addresses for the people who filled out the survey. It's part of the way Survey Monkey works with anonymizing the data. There are 286 people signed up on the project website for this, for notifications. And like a MailChimp mailer went out to all of them, letting them know about the event. We'll do a follow-up one on the survey once it's together. Unfortunately, the way Survey Monkey is, it, it only gives you the tail end of an IP address or the start end of an IP address and it doesn't give you another identifier for the, for the people. Okay, my last talking head point for you guys tonight is, where have I been on the comp plan and what's going on? So the comp plan, I, it is my, it is my moderately optimistic goal to have that finished and before you all for the regular session at the end of the month, for a recommendation to the council with the changes. I understand that that, and I want you all to understand, that that largely hinges on my ability to get that done by Monday of next week so that you all have time with it. There's a chance that works out. We have a new staff person starting on Monday and we have a handful of things that are kind of gobbling up time right now. But it's also important to me that the comp plan doesn't languish. And so I am going to shoot to try and get this complete by the end of, start of next week for you all. If I fall short on that, let's consider making the April work session a regular session and a work session, a regular session solely for the purpose of the recommendation of the comp plan to the council, not a regular session. So that is my goal for you all and if I fall short and need another week and a half, that's, that might be where we can. Did, I don't know if I had this information when we last talked about the comp plan, but we sent it to statewide planning and got responses on it. So statewide planning basically avails municipalities the ability to send ahead of your formal review and get comment. We did that process, I will say, we got, to everyone's credit, really, at the end of the day, two requests for things that needed to be changed to the plan. They were very minor.
And under what element?
One was related to the numbering of inconsistencies on the future land use map and the listing in the table. They're numbered on the map and not in the narrative. Statewide planning said, no, 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 make the numbers match, please. And the second was about the way we do our recreational analysis for the town. We do not follow the state's sort of standard formula for recreation planning. And so they've asked us to acknowledge in our plan why we have done it differently and what it is that we do. And so.
Do you have to acknowledge it in the plan or can you do it as a, in a letter and say, hey, here's our.
No, it's a request for a change.
Our methodology and this is why we're sticking with.
Yeah, it's a request for a change in the plan. Basically, it's largely them saying, we ask you to write it in this particular way. We see that what you've done seems sufficient, but we'd like you to explain that you have done it to a different thing and what that different thing you sought for is.
But the average person that reads it doesn't know this is a standard.
No, no, right, it was. There were, there were, as per statewide planning, comp plan review, a number of other recommendations and things they would like to see in the plan. They, that it would be great if your plan did this, it would be great if your plan did that. But at the end of the day, the, your plan is not approvable because of, it were these, these two minor items. So. That was good to hear.
Very good.
Well, to everybody's credit because that was a, that was a group one. And then if we want to add for discussion items.
There was some talk, way back when, of, um, when this goes to the town council. How does that, presentations, uh, elements, is that something that's still considerations or?
Do you guys, really, it's a question for you all, do you guys want to do that? If people do, I am, inevitably I will take the lead on the large amount of the presentation as an overall. But if, if there are people who want to represent the planning board and do some of the presentation as well, I think when I brought it up, it was an idea of, it's, it's sort of all of, all of our, all of our, but all of your document really at the end of the day. If you wanted to, we could do sort of a, a portion where we all have a, a voice in that. It's really up to you all, it's, the point of it isn't to put anyone around this table on the spot or make anyone around this table feel like they're then, then being asked to do something different or more differently than you'd like to. I'm, I'm perfectly happy to do it all by myself, I would love to have you all attend that meeting and be present for it. But if you would all, also if there's anyone who would like to help in presenting with it, that'd be great. But it's up to you all.
Off my pay grade.
I'm, I'm certainly willing to help. I mean, if, if that's what, if, if we as a team think that that would be looked upon well by the council and by the community, I'm certainly, you know, I, I could study up on what I'm supposed to talk about, but, you know, and work with you on that. So I'm certainly willing to do a section or a part. I could, I'm not embarrassed to do it in front of people, so I certainly would if that's what we decide that would be representative of the, the.
Thank you, Pam, appreciate it.
I mean, we can think about, there's, sometimes I think we can lose perspective really quickly on the comp plan on what we, what we set out to do, what were the purpose of it, where did we land, what was it? The thing looks totally different, what happened to it, right? There's, there's a lot of changes that ended up happening into the comp plan and I laugh all, every time that I pull the original contract which says, write two new elements of the comp plan. We went far, that is not what we did, right? We, we did far more than that. But potentially maybe I'm wondering if it would be nice, if, if you wanted to, give a presentation on the two new.
Elements, yeah.
Elements of the plan and then hand over the sort of questions, answers, what changed and where. These are the more like gritty detail junk to me, but gave that first sort of, these are what we, these are the two new elements of this plan that I've been put forward and these are the general goals we're trying to go with them. That might be, that, if, that might be something to think about, but we have a little time on.
I also don't want to, you know, obviously to the, to the chair, I would certainly yield that opportunity to you, John. I mean, if, or anybody else, but I, I, all is that, I, I just. I was just the one who, who said.
Motion's already been made and proved, you're in.
It's Amy and Kayla, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm fine with it.
No, but it's, and, and as Kayla indicated, there's, there's time, there's time to fine tune that, so, so it's good.
Think about it, think about it on, all on your own, right? There's a piece to this that everyone probably wants to think about on their own and then there's a piece that maybe you all want to think about together. Think about it on your own, reach out to me if you have an interest on it on your own and then we.
That's fair.
Line up and I'll start with me in the back of the line.
Amy, you want to talk about, number one, legal updates and then your memo?
Yeah, why don't I ask if, what questions you have?
For update or the memo?
I'll just repeat the one that I asked you out of, and I, not that I have any lots to develop, but knowing what we went through, the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, as a planning board member in the future, we are not allowed to represent ourselves before this board for any type of land subdivisions or zone changes or variances.
For, for anything.
Okay.
And that applies to you appearing before this board, whether it's through you personally, a representative, an attorney. You cannot appear before your.
a representative, an attorney, you cannot appear before your own board absent a specific permission from the Ethics Commission. It's called a hardship exemption. So it's not enough to just recuse and come to this side, you actually need permission of the Ethics Commission, and...
Regardless of the type of... My major is in trade.
Correct.
So how does that, how does that, I guess, where is the point where it goes from recusal to actually have to get, if you own any piece of the property, or is it, um, if you have a...
Something's being developed on a neighboring property, you just recuse it.
So...
But if it's something that you own, or your family owns, then you have to, that's the point where, what's the tipping point, where it goes to recusal?
So recusal is required where you or a family member, or a business associate, have an interest in the application. So if you personally own property within the notice area, you're all familiar with the rule, you're required to recuse, if it's your spouse, or your child, or your business partner who owns property within the notice area. When your business associate appears before the board, you're required to recuse, you have to, um, again, seek specific permission from the Ethics Commission in order to appear before your own board. So, in the case of a board member who wants to subdivide his or her own property, and intends to present that application to the board, again, whether it's personally or through representative, you need that specific permission from the Ethics Commission. That prohibition applies to board members who are currently serving, and then continues for one year after you leave the board.
Can you clarify when we say that that accounts for any type of subdivision? Does that count for administrative subdivisions that are not approved by the planning board, but are approved by the administrative officer?
So that, in that case, eh, um, permission from the Ethics Commission isn't required because for an administrative subdivision, you're not required to appear your own, before your own board. It's just an administrative action that's approved by the administrative officer. That does not fall within the prohibition of appearing before your own board.
Um, if a member is, uh, in a butter to a project that is going to occur, what would be the procedure? They would have to refuse themselves, but they wouldn't be able to speak as a citizen as well?
You can speak as a, as a citizen, if you recuse yourself. There is an exception to the, um, the rule, and it's known as the public forum exception, so if you're speaking at a public hearing where everyone has the same opportunity to speak, um, you can do that, but you can't appear before, before your own board for purposes of, um, your own application. I would like to be given a heads up, and I will do my best to give you timely advice when those questions arise, because I prefer, if possible, that recusal be just that, and I understand that per town policy, um, board members who recuse have to actually leave the room, is that correct, Kayla? So that's not a legal requirement, that's not a requirement of the Ethics Commission. Recusal is just, you file a form, we suggest for best practice, leave, you know, leave your seat and sit with the audience, but apparently, it's a leave the room. So if you leave, leave the room, then you wouldn't, you'd be precluded from offering comment.
Or I suppose making faces in the back of the audience to your fellow board members.
Did that include you couldn't be a project manager on, on a project that was coming before the board?
I would, I would like to consider the facts of each case, but could a person, could a member of the board speak before the board and represent the applicant? The answer is no, you know? What, what goes on behind the scenes, I, I don't always know about, so if any of you have any interest in applications that are coming before the board, let me know, and I'll attempt to provide guidance.
Thank you, thanks, Amy.
I don't have any other legal updates, other than, um, some of you may have known about the Statewide Planning Institute scheduled for March fourteenth, that's been canceled. Um, another quick update that is not really within your purview, and I'll try to keep it quick, but I just want to make you all aware, Kayla and Jay brought to my attention a recent decision of the Rhode Island Superior Court regarding who is the proper entity to be sending notice. It's our current practice to have the applicants themselves send notice for public hearings before the planning board in connection with, you know, master plan meetings, and I, and that is also the practice of the zoning board. Zoning board, we have recurring problems, every three months or so, an application has to be continued, because the applicant either forgot to do it, or, you know, um, based on my review of that decision, which isn't technically controlling law in Rhode Island yet, because it's just a Superior Court decision, not a Supreme Court decision, but I think it is well reasoned, and Judge Leach pointed out that the language of the statute requires notice to be sent to the applicant, as well as to those requiring notice, which really leads to the only logical conclusion, it's the town, the board themselves, that needs to send notice. So I've advised, um, I, just, recent...
Sounds like a liability. Yeah.
Well, you know, it's always the applicant's responsibility to ensure that the list is correct, um, and it's the applicant, it's still the applicant's cost, it's, the, the cost by statute is al, is already assessed to the applicant, um, but that is going to be a change in practice going forward, and, and so I'll be working with, uh, planning staff to make sure we're up to speed on that, um, but I've suggested checking with other municipalities for best practices.
Wow, interesting.
Spend a lot of time in the post office.
Well, and it's funny, right, because we, we, interestingly enough, we send notice to the applicant, and then we ask the applicant to send it to everybody else. And so I, I, I'm not trying to go down a court case where we file the appeal and become the child who figures out whether or not that is providing notice to the applicant to provide to others, or whether, and that's, I don't intend to become the example of that, or the municipality who plays that out, but that is sort of how we have done it previously, no, reading the same statute, and per the logic of that decision, it isn't something that we would do differently now, we would be physically sending the certified mail by the date. I mean, we, we already downstairs do the postings, the advertisement in the newspaper, we prepare the wording of the ad and the notice that will go out, we provide exactly how it needs to go, what date it needs to be sent. There's a large amount of this we already do, it honestly, basically just comes down to, now, we will be doing the steps of the actual mailing receipt, collection of return receipts, et cetera.
Okay, interesting. Pam, you had a question earlier, I could see it, I could, it was bubbling up.
I'm not going to do it, because I don't want to be the person that goes past nine o'clock, thank you.
I was offering it, Pam, it was yours. Yeah, true. Okay, um, we do have a couple of, one additional item, and it does say, state comments from interested citizens, and for those who may be watching on, on circuit TV, closed circuit TV, there is no one in the audience at this time, there was a individual earlier, between about seven fifteen to about eight forty, uh, seven forty-five, uh, but there is no one in the audience at this point, and I just want to make that part of the public record. Um, anything else for the good of the cause? No. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second from Steve, second from Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
She's got the longest commute.
And thank you, folks, for taking us right to nine o'clock.